I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the council chambers. The meetings will be webcast and accessed at the city's website. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meetings by accessing the website, providing written comments at the website, or participating by phone, or attending the meeting in person, but again, we are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate 16 people at one time. Can we have roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bettsid?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here. And can we have approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes from the July 23 planning commission meeting.
Second.
Was that Commissioner Hinkle, the second? Oh, oh, Commissioner Bettsid. Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsid?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Commission Secretary, any comments?
We have received some additional correspondence regarding two of the items. I believe it's item two and item three. One was emailed to your previous seat. You also have a copy on the dice there, and the other was handed to you by George Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from planning commission members?
Uh, the second, the one we just got from Sean Smith, and which item is this directed toward?
Is that for item three, Sean? Yes, it's item three.
Okay, and I'm still not clear on the thrust of the message. Are you, is this from you, Mr. Smith?
Sean answered Carol Hunt's questions, and which I will elaborate a little bit more during my presentation as well.
Okay, it just didn't say who it was from. The only way it says it's from is Sean Smith, so that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
So the text in black is from Carol Hunt, and the response is from Sean Smith?
Any other questions? Okay, seen none. Do we have any business from the floor? This is an opportunity from any member of the public who would like to address the planning commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Seen none? Maria, do we have any?
There is none.
Okay. Okay. Before I read the first item into the agenda, for those of you who have never been here before, I will read the item into the record, then staff will give their presentation, followed by testimony from, I'm sorry, followed by the applicant, and then testimony from many supporters, followed by testimony from anyone in opposition. The applicant will then have final rebuttal. I will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. So moving on to the first item for tonight. Thank you. Consider approval CUP 2020-004, a request for a conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing athletic facility to include outdoor athletic training activities and events for a portion of an approximate .6 acre property located at 340 Clovis Avenue. Athletic performance applicant, David Standifer, representative. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So the property is located at 340 Clovis Avenue, and the applicant, Athletic Performance, runs a personal health and fitness facility at the Clovis Avenue site. The use was grandfathered in several years ago and has since expanded into an athletic training facility. You can see it there on the street view there. The use is located on over half an acre, .6 to be exact, and is developed with an approximate 9,000 square foot athletic training facility with associated parking, and there's some existing ancillary outdoor training on the west side of the use. The applicant's permit request includes additional outdoor athletic training resources and also includes events within their existing parking area. As you've probably observed on a site visit, the use maintains several parking stalls on the site that have been utilized for outdoor activities. There's some temporary synthetic lawn out there that's been used due to COVID situation out there. They are currently using that doing an outdoor facility. With approval, the applicant will permanently replace the existing parking stalls with expansion of its outdoor training facility and the additional outdoor uses. However, this operation is located within the City of Clovis Parking Business Improvement Area, and which waives off-street parking for individual businesses. The outdoor operational aspects of the business will be divided into separate operational components. Adult soccer leagues, football training, outdoor rental space, and movie nights are seasonal uses that are under consideration for the project and will operate at various times throughout the week. Specifically, assembly and meeting facilities, event rental facilities, and specialized training, and special outdoor events with onsite alcoholic beverages are uses that can be permitted subject to the conditional use permit. Outdoor activities such as movie nights, food trucks, and initially pumpkin and Christmas tree sales are uses typically approved with an administrative use permit and should be a separate entitlement from the conditional use permit request. Speaking of the pumpkin and Christmas tree sales, there were some concerns we received on some phone calls regarding the Christmas tree sales and the pumpkin sales, so the applicant has removed those from the request to be amenable to what their concerns were from the neighborhood or from the area businesses. So during the preparation of the report, staff received two letters of correspondence. We received a letter from Mr. Jeff Davis, who owns a saddleback shopping center across the street at Clovis and Third. I had an opportunity to discuss his concerns and the operational aspect of the use. Specifically, he was, Mr. Davis was concerned with the overflow of parking of any of the uses that occasionally tend to use his parking lot for overflow parking. So I had a discussion with Mr. Davis. I had him reach out, I had, the applicant reach out to Mr. Davis. They had some correspondence back and forth. They actually spoke, and at that point, I received an email from Mr. Davis withdrawing his letter of opposition. He was satisfied that the applicant had met his concerns and addressed them. Secondly, staff received a correspondence from Mr. Mark Cannon, who owns the property just to the north of the facility, which is the automotive section, and that is the memo that you received this evening. I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Cannon regarding his concerns, and he felt comfortable that between the applicant's parking monitoring, staff and police conditions, that he just wanted to make sure that his concerns were addressed, and I think we did a job of that within the body of the staff report. So there's a lot proposed on the site, and the applicant appears to have provided a good plan to their operation that clearly addresses any concern from area businesses. Therefore, staff feels comfortable and recommend the approval of CUP 2020-004, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes the summary of the report, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions, or staff?
Yes. For the record, can you, Londo, can you let us know what memorial, the project to be, I'm sorry, the applicant is requesting to memorialize, um, I'm sorry, my computer just, to memorialize the existing health and fitness, use and expanded facilities? Can you tell me what that means?
That is correct. When this business started, it was approved as a personal fitness facility, which is permitted in the C3 Zone District. Since then, the operation has grown. The building itself is 9,000 square feet, and the business has expanded to that. As you've seen in the past, towards the west end, adjacent to the alley, they also do outdoor training out there. So the use is now a health and fitness facility. So since it was grandfathered in many years ago, it has been operating kind of legal monconforming. So the conditional use permit would only, not only approve the outdoor events, it would also memorialize the physical fitness facility and additional training. The applicant has said he could probably expand on it a little bit more than, he has signed contracts with major league football players, major league baseball players, and they want to be, provide the opportunity for them to practice out in an outdoor environment, and that's why they need to expand the use and brought this all together. In addition to that, they thought it'd be a great opportunity that they're on Clovis Avenue to conduct some seasonal and some outdoor events such as movie nights, and they also mentioned food trucks out in that area, which would be subject to a separate entitlement administrative use permit. So this will memorialize all those uses through the conditional use permit and a subsequent AUP administrative use permit.
Yeah, Londo, currently, these, this facility, is that under the state mandate to not open, or is it open for business inside?
There were some allowances made for outdoor uses, and as long as they practiced the social distancing, they were allowed to operate, and that was granted for the outdoor use, nothing inside the building.
Okay. Then I'll note for the record, day before yesterday at 3:40 PM, I drove around that facility and drove through the alleyway to the west of it, and there were occupants, several occupants, between I'd say five and 10, inside that facility because the garage doors were open up. So that's information for planning staff that they probably need to follow up on that.
We certainly will. We've received numerous CRMs through our system of several businesses throughout the city of Clovis that are sometimes pushing the limits or operating without permission, and we aggressively go after those as well. But we remind them of the restrictions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, Londo, so you mentioned the Christmas, pumpkin, Halloween, basically the applicant's rescinding that if they do decide at some point in the future to want to bring such an event forward, do they need to come back through the CUP administrative use permit? Or will this, if it's approved tonight, prohibit them from ever doing that type of event on that premises?
It wouldn't prohibit them from doing it ever. They are subject to an administrative use permit. Just to explain a little bit about that, it's a public hearing process, but it's at the staff level. It's facilitated by the planning staff. They submit an application. We do a notice, very similar to the conditional use permit process. We notice within a 300-foot radius, a minimum of 25 different property owners, and we facilitate a public hearing. At that point, we take any comments or concerns from area property owners. If there aren't any, we prepare a list of conditions, and we send those to the director for determination. So that's a completely separate process. It would not be part of this conditional use permit tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Of course.
That wouldn't prohibit that in the future, depending on how we vote. Okay, thank you.
I have another question. This location, according to the documents that we received, is planning to serve alcohol. Now, are they seeking a permanent alcohol license at this location, or is this going to be a one-day license for events that occur there?
It would require ABC approval, and in doing so, the alcoholic beverage control has the opportunity to release an entertainment permit or a daily use permit. So it would not be on a daily basis. This would be on special events only. Let's say they had, there was a wedding onsite. They could apply for an ABC license, which would be subject to review by the Clovis Police Department for all the regulations, railings, make sure that no one leaves the facility. So it is not an everyday approval.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have one more. Sure. So in reading the material, I noted that other than having kind of a crash bar or some emergency exit from the fenced-in area, there's no access that's going to be permitted out to the sidewalk or street area at Clovis Avenue? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, the applicant has stated that they will have access to Clovis Avenue. We haven't memorialized that yet. There, if there is, if this use permit is approved, they will still be subject to a site plan review. The site plan review will memorialize all the access points, circulation, where the porta potties will be placed, where the food, where the seasonal use or the movie nights will be placed. It will memorialize, and we will review it at that time. We want to make sure the police department is comfortable with all the access points, as well as ABC and the fire department.
And part of the reason I ask is I flash back to a prior request here, just down Clovis Avenue, where we had another applicant wanting to do kind of some Christmas pumpkin type things, and understandably, this is not the request now, but it made me realize and start to reflect on safety and the fact that Clovis Avenue is a busy street, and if you step off that sidewalk and you're not looking, it might be trouble for you. So I just really want to make sure we're cautious, especially when you talk about events that have alcohol, you know, things get exciting, maybe there's some intense soccer, football going on.
Right.
People may have less than ideal judgment, so I think safety's got to be a big factor, and it sounds like planning staff will address that in the site plan review.
We certainly will, Commissioner Bettsid. And if you look at, if you even go back to their exhibit with the fencing, they show a fencing material on the property, the street view with there. They show, that hasn't been memorialized. It's shown for conceptual purposes. The site plan review will delineate exactly how that will operate as a measure of protection from Clovis Avenue and from the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none. I'll open it up to the applicant.
We have the applicant connected through WebEx. David?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening. So, um, yes, with our project, we are trying to add the turf space. We've been in business 19 years, and now we have the opportunity to start training athletes for the NFL Draft, MLB, so a lot higher level athletes. So with us being able to have an outdoor venue, we're going to be able to recruit higher level guys into the area. As it is now, we were having to travel to go to Fresno State, Heather Fields, those type of areas to do our speed work and drills. Unfortunately, it wasn't a good selling point to agents looking to bring in high-level guys, so that's where the outdoor turf space came to be, to try to help with those. One of the areas that was, there was people in the gym. Still, to this day, we have physical therapy in the gym, and physical therapists work with clients throughout the day. The majority of our athletes are outside. We have our athletes running on the turf, and then we also put four squat racks and other items that we could use for their lifting protocols outside. As far as the seasonal sales, that was just something with discussion, an initial meeting that we had a while ago. I'm not looking to do any kind of seasonal stuff at all. At the time, it was just like, put down what ideas that we had, and after considering it, it's not something that I want to go down. I'd rather focus on the, you know, the adult leagues, the special events, those type of things. So that will be something that we will not be doing in the future. The alcohol, that will be, we were talking to Sauces, Lunas, different types, and that would be where, like you were saying, we'd use a one-day event alcohol license, but that's something that we have to look into more. We haven't even really dived into that. We've been focused on keeping the business going with the athletes and just making sure we can take care of those until we're able to fully open.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have one. Are you open Friday through Sunday?
Um, right now, we're open on the turf for an hour on Saturday morning. Friday, we're open. We have pro guys in the morning, and then we have training groups at 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, and then, of course, the physical therapists.
The reason I ask this and to staff, nothing in our paperwork states that they're open Friday through Sunday. So if, does that need to be stated now so that it's clear that they can operate on Friday through Sunday? Because otherwise, someone's going to bring this up, and they're going to have to come back to us, and he's going to have to pay to have this corrected.
We could certainly expand on that. The only condition we have is from the police department that says that the hours of operation for the outdoor use shall be 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM each day of the week.
Okay, but the applicant has not stated that they're going to be open, and we need to make that clear, put it in writing, so that it's clear that he can operate seven days a week. Because it will definitely come up in the future, I guarantee you.
We can certainly do that on, upon the commission's recommendation.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none? I'm going to open it up for anyone here speaking in support of this item? Maria, is there anyone on the phone?
There's none.
Okay. I'll open it up now for anyone here speaking in opposition.
Yeah, I did receive a note just recently that we should clarify regarding the COVID, that we are not here to enforce it. We are here to educate regarding COVID. So we rely on the state and the county for responsible enforcement, but thank you for making us aware of your concerns. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yeah, wasn't for enforcement purposes. I want to make sure that the business owner knows that they should not be opened up if we're not cleared to do so, but it can be made in an educational form, not enforcement.
Okay. Does the applicant have any final rebuttal?
No, I mean, we're trying, we're doing our best to adhere to everything. That's why we're trying to do our things outside. But like I said, we do have physical therapy inside, and as far as we know, by state laws, our physical therapists are still allowed to work with clients because it's a necessity.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public portion now and bring it back to the commission for any comments, questions, concerns, motions.
I just have one question for Londo. Under condition number one, planning division conditions, if I'm reading this correctly, it won't necessarily come back to us one year from now. It will be reviewed by planning staff, and if they feel as though it should come to us, it will.
That is correct. If we find that there are issues with the use and it's detrimental to the area, we have the ability to bring it back to the planning commission for consideration.
This is such a stated multi-use facility, it's very much like the one that Commissioner Bredstead spoke to us about a little bit ago. I would like to see a mandatory review at the, at the planning commission's level one year, hence if this is passed today. That way, we're, we've got a year under our belt, and we make sure all these multi-uses comply with what the applicant wants and what the city wants.
We could certainly amend the condition.
With that, then I'll make a motion to, I'm sorry.
I could have some comments. So my concern in regards to this project of the CUP is similar to staff regarding Clovis Avenue, highly visible thoroughfare, and warrants careful consideration, porta potties being visible, garbage cans, I'm sure, music being really loud up until 11 o'clock. I know that residents are within 300 or 400 feet of this area, however, music carries. And I'm a soccer fan, and I know how loud we can get. So if you're doing night soccer games, I can tell you, we can get pretty loud. And so I have concerns about this CUP, and I'm sorry, I cannot support it.
Any other questions?
In the motion, whoever makes it, I would like to see that we clarify the hours of operation, seven days a week to the maximum 11:00 PM at night on it.
Any other comments? I agree that I have some concerns, but I have full faith in the staff that they can work through them. I think the noise issues, and I think having good fencing can kind of limit the possibility of potential dangers for Clovis Avenue. I think obviously, especially in this atmosphere, in this environment, we really need to help any businesses that we can to improve and continue to thrive. I think this could be something really good for the city. I do agree that there are some concerns we'll need to keep an eye on, and I would move forward with making a motion to approve this item with the addition of language being added, that they will, could be open seven days a week from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and also that under condition number one, it be changed, that they will come back to the planning commission after one year for a review. That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Bettsid, to approve CUP 2020-004, subject to the modified condition of number one, and the hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on a daily basis. Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsid?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
No.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item. Consider items associated with approximately 10 acres of land located at the northwest corner of Teague and Locan Avenues. Granville Homes applicant, Valley Coastal Development LLC and Tri Valley Development Group LLC owners, Gary Giannetti, Civil Engineering and Land Surveying Representative. Consider approval TM 6339, a request to approve a vesting tentative track map to include 47 lots and an outlot, and superseding two previously approved tentative maps, TM 6134A and TM 6264. And consider approval PDP 2020-001, a request to approve a planned development permit to amend the conditions of approval and development standards for the planned residential development associated with TM 6264. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. Staff, I would like to start off by indicating that we did, staff did receive communication from Carol Hunt, who is also viewing the meeting tonight via WebEx, and will be speaking in regards, in regards to this project. The email correspondence is dated today and was provided to the commission prior to the meeting starting. And just for clarification or confirmation, that Carol's questions are in black, and Sean's replies are in blue. And one other thing I would like to add was that Carol did send a second email to me requesting for the grading plan for the proposed project, which point I replied back to her indicating that currently, the developer has not provided that. As soon as they do, she's welcome to review it. As indicated in the staff report, the project is located at the northwest corner of Teague and Locan Avenues, and it encompasses approximately 10 acres of land, just directly south of Granville's Track 6109. The applicant this evening is requesting two entitlements from the planning commission. The first one is vesting tentative track map 6339, which is a 47-lot, single-family residential development with 60-foot and 50-foot wide public streets at a density of 4.68 dwelling units per acre. The project is accessible from two main entries along the Locan Avenue street frontage. The project will landscape their corresponding portions of Locan Avenue with, specifically with Chinese pistachio and gracian laurel trees along the western portion of Locan Avenue. And the project will also provide a neighborhood park with this project, since the applicant is proposing a overall planned development permit. The next slide will focus in more on the neighborhood park for your review. Here, the applicant is proposing a shade structure, two picnic tables, and some pedestrian benches, and landscaping along the perimeter of the neighborhood park. The second entitlement the applicant's requesting your approval this evening is planned development permit 2020-001. This will combine the previously approved projects on this project site, as indicated in the staff report, into one comprehensive development project. The applicant is now proposing a non-gated The applicant is now proposing a non-gated. Uh, the commission recalls in the staff report, the northern half of this project, the previous map uh, is approved for a gated uh, project for about approximately thirty-six lots. And the southern um, half of this project is, has been previously approved for fourteen lots, so a total of fifty lots combined. Uh, this project here uh, is um, removing the gated portion of it, so they're all going to be public streets. Um, the applicant is requesting specific setbacks with this project. Now, it's important to note here that with this revision, um, although there may be uh, a reduction in, in setbacks to the living area, the applicant is proposing a twenty-foot setback to uh, garages for the entire project area. Uh, also the lot coverage here, he's increased, he's requesting an increase uh, to up to sixty percent. Uh, it will include sidewalks throughout the entire project. And the project will also have standard garages twenty by twenty-two. Uh, typically with planned residential developments, the commission may sometimes uh, see uh, twenty by twenty garages. So this will be standard, twenty by twenty-two. Uh, as indicated in the staff report towards the uh, completion of the, of the um, commission staff report, the applicant did submit a, what's referred to as an alternative plan, uh, which it was modified to um, allow for a fifty-lot uh, development plant. The applicant would like to proceed with the modified plan. Staff did review this and did uh, just find that it's um, it does not constitute a significant change and it is in substantial conformance with the, the original submitted plan for the forty-seven lots. Uh, so therefore, the planning commission this evening uh, may choose to recommend approval for the fifty-lot alternative plan. And um, as you can see here uh, on the screen, I have both the forty-seven lot on the left and the fifty lot on the right. The circulation, the street pattern remains the same. Uh, the applicant's not removing uh, any of the proposed public streets uh, with the fifty lot. Uh, where those three additional lots uh, come into play, it's in the southern half of the project. In this portion here, the applicant's uh, is, is adding additional three lots here. Uh, the land uses remain the same, the zoning remains the same. Uh, this project complies with the densities with both uh, corresponding uh, land uses. Uh, staff therefore recommends that the planning commission this evening approve vesting tentative track map sixty-three thirty-nine, either the forty-seven lot project or the fifty lot project, subject to the conditions of approval attached as uh, attachment two. Approve planned development permit twenty twenty dash zero zero one, subject to the conditions of approval label as attachment three. And finally, make a finding of consistency that the dedication towards public right-of-way is proportionate to the development being requested. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Uh, yes, on the uh, new track map, we're making lots smaller. Are we going to less than five feet side yard setback on the garage side?
Oh, the applicant would like to answer that question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Henkel, no, uh, the side yard setback on the garage side is five feet.
Okay.
For your request, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
We're still going to have the city code that all trash cans need to be stored behind a gated area in this?
Yes. And I will have to look back at the conditions of approval. I believe there might be a condition in there too, that the applicant will be uh, paving that portion of the side of the garage. So therefore you can put the tortoise back there.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question for you, on page forty-two, it appears that on the lots one through thirty-one, on our records, it showed that the garage side would be four feet, not five feet. So just, I don't know if that's a typographical error, but our notes do read four instead of five.
That is how the setback, uh, how the proposed setbacks came in to staff. So what I would prefer is if the applicant this evening confirms that.
Okay.
And we can modify that in uh, in the conditions of approval.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
George, um, I'm, I'm a little confused, it's easy to do nowadays with me. Uh, it's the first time I've ever heard or seen um, staff to ask us to make a determination as to density on a particular project, forty-seven as to fifty. Um, I'm curious to, to, why are we placed in a position to select either or?
Go ahead. The applicant would like to address the commission.
Yeah, but my question is for staff, sir.
Uh, we understand that that's unique, it doesn't happen very often where um, you know, pretty much at the eleventh hour, uh, when the staff report was done, you know, an alternative was submitted to staff. Um, but uh, to answer your, your question, when, when the fifty lot was provided to us, we did confirm or we did um, verified that the density is still match, you know, is consistent with the land use corresponding with this project. Uh, this project is unique in terms of that the northern half, it has a land use designation of medium. The southern, the southern half has land use of low. So staff make sure that both, the project is separated, it still meets the land uses and, which they do.
I understand what you're saying. Uh, I've only been here a little over four years and it's the first time it's ever come up to me. And I, my understanding of this commission is it's, is, is an advisor to city council. And then we also make decisions on CUPs. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with actually taking on the role of a developer and selecting how dense a project should be.
Commissioner Cunningham, if uh, your question is concerning the difference between the forty-seven lot proposal and the fifty lot proposal, uh, part of the reason that the commission is being presented with both options this evening is because the developer has expressed an intent to pursue the fifty lot proposal. Uh, and the better practice would be for the planning commission to actually take action and make a recommendation or not recommend uh, the item that would ultimately be advanced to council. Part of the reason for bringing the fifty lot plan at this time is based on the circulation pattern, the number of lots and the differences between the proposed map that was subject to the public notice for the hearing is that they are considered by staff to be minor deviations. If the commission feels that these are not minor deviations, then the appropriate uh, action would be to not proceed with a recommendation in favor of the fifty lot plan. The forty-seven lot plan is still before you. Uh, but if it is the uh, decision of the commission to recommend approval of the fifty lot plan, since that would ultimately go to city council, it would be more appropriate to uh, make a decision with respect to that particular plan as opposed to approving or recommending something that would ultimately not be put in front of the city council for final approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I um, I just, I'm uncomfortable being placed in a position of selecting one or another. I believe that's not our, within our purview. You present a density and we accept to reject it and then it's up to the developer to present something else or go away, but not to present us with making the choice. Um, I can see involving the city in litigation down the line if someone objects to uh, what we selected, given two choices. In this way, I think it's just cleaner uh, to select one and go up or down with that one.
And in the staff report, the attachments, uh, there is a resolution crafted with respect to the forty lot plan and a separate one with respect to the fifty lot plan that would include that necessary finding that there are minor deviations. Uh, so it would be properly characterized as a modification of the track map that was uh, that was proposed and originally reviewed by staff. Uh, so if it is the uh, the decision of the commission to proceed on that basis, then selecting the resolution that is included as attachment eleven to the staff report would have the proper findings uh, and references to the fifty lot plan.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant for your presentation.
Uh, good evening, uh, member of the planning commission, Chair, uh, Sir Henkel. Uh, my name is Darius Ansemi, representing Granville Homes, thirteen ninety-six, uh, West Turnown in Fresno. Uh, sorry about the confusion, that is a great point you bring, Commissioner Cunningham. Uh, so we, so we have the, the north parcel which has been mapped and approved. Uh, and we recently, which has been, you know, on, on its way to, to be developed. And then we recently acquired or in contract to acquire the south parcel. When we met with our um, homeowners, if you can actually go back to the aerial map that shows the two parcels, please. So we, yeah, so the, the, the parcel to the, the homes to the north and to the west of the designated project is uh, there you are, right there. Those are our homeowners, uh, as part of what we call the Deville neighborhood. That goes from Locan to uh, Temperance. And a lot of those folks have family members that have been very interested in our project. So, which is just the north half of the, the overall project that you see right now in, in the red. And when we met with them to, to let them know that we're uh, actually have acquired the piece of the south as well and this is what our proposal looks like. There was, the feedback that we got back is that, okay, you have, that your lots are too big and we need something, uh, and, and we discussed price range and they said your lots are too big. We need something a little bit narrower, a little bit less maintenance. Water costs are going up, so we want, we want something more affordable, uh, slightly more affordable. So basically the difference between those two is, is one is forty-seven lots, one is fifty, and we prefer the fifty. And we, my request would be to, uh, in front of you tonight, would be to approve the fifty lot uh, project. So, and your staff is correct, at the eleventh hour, this happened so quick, at the eleventh hour, we, we got, we resubmitted that. And basically what it does makes some of the lots nar, on the southern half, uh, about uh, five or seven, eight feet, actually, I'm sorry, it goes from seventy to sixty, uh, ten feet narrower. And so you get, basically overall, you get three lots priced more moderately uh, for folks that want to move into that neighborhood. Um, that's really the, the biggest difference between, between the two. And yes, it's confusing, you're exactly right. Uh, we don't want you to uh, be, you know, picking densities. Really, our uh, request is to approve the fifty foot, I'm, I'm sorry, the fifty lot, not the forty-seven lot neighborhood. There's one more thing that I'd like to bring to your attention that we uh, didn't, somehow it got missed on our end. The garages are, the request for garages are the twenty by twenty uh, garages. And I think the staff report may say twenty by twenty-two. And all the homes in the area that we have built, which is uh, directly to the north and to the west, and we're actually developing pro, a, a project directly to the northeast of this project, track six two three nine. And they're all, basically it's the same homes that we're building in those neighborhoods that are coming over here. I'm not really modifying anything, except in last time at the planning commission, Commissioner Henkel said, hey, we need sidewalk on both sides. So we've actually modified this plan to, to, to address that and the five-foot side yard on the garage side. Uh, and by the way, that's also what our homeowners request as well. So it's market-driven and also what the request of the planning commission was when the, the first project got approved about, I want to say, two years ago. I hope that answers any, any, any confusion and I apologize, it's really our fault. Staff, uh, if they got that at the, at the eleventh hour uh, from us. Uh, basically, again, it's the same product that you, that you see as you drive through Deville, uh, directly to the north. It's basically similar product to that, few new models that are going to be made available um, as well for the public. I'd be glad to answer any other questions the commission may have.
Questions?
Um, yes, I have a question now. Uh, lots one through thirty-one, are they going to have five-foot set, setback on the garage, on the garage side?
Correct.
Cause our documentation says four.
Yeah, I think documentation, make, make, documentation means that four and three, it should really be five and four. Is that correct, Gary? Yeah.
Same as the uh.
The ones on the south, yeah, correct, it was, same as the ones on the south.
Which you have five and four there.
Correct.
Good, because that's, that's.
That was it, you, you brought that up, I think, two years ago, it said we need five foot on the garage, on the garage side. And yes, we're, we're putting five foot on all garage sites, yes.
Cause you know, there's no way to get it.
Yes.
Get the trash can, once you put the trash cans in the side yard, there's no way to get around them. Cause I, again, I measured what I have, it's thirty-eight inches that you need. So how many of us in this room could fit between ten inches?
You're exactly right, Commissioner Henkel, yes, you're exactly right, you're exactly right.
Thank you, that, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, any none, thank you. Or you have a question? Sorry.
I think I do, um, otherwise it's for discussion, but um, Mr. Ansemi, you made a, a comment, you know, that you had pulled some folks or got some data that would indicate uh, individuals are wanting less lot space. Um, I guess I have a, a contrary view, uh, just anecdotally from different data I've gathered, especially during COVID. There's a lot more people at home and there's a lot of people who kind of moved into tiny homes or smaller homes that aren't too pleased right now because they really can't go anywhere and they're not able to expand um, into more open living space because of the small lot size, small housing, et cetera. So um, I'm not sure, you know, what the end is in sight with COVID, probably going to be around a while yet. But uh, to that end, I guess I, just for the sake of discussion, kind of like the diversity in housing of, of the forty-seven lot in the sense that um, I think there are people that probably would have some partiality to a little bit more space to enjoy some outdoor living, um, that maybe otherwise would be pre-COVID, they, they wouldn't have taken advantage of. So, um, just, just a comment really for you.
Let me, if I may address that, can we put uh, if you could put both of them up side by side, uh, staff, that'd be great. So really the, is there a laser pointer that it can?
It won't work on the TV.
Which one is? Oops. There we go. Um, so the difference between these two maps is in that block, basically. The depth, you're exactly right, people, what our homeowners want, in-home, in-home office. They, they want a backyard, oops, they want a backyard with a, with more outdoor entertainment. So what we have done actually, it, it's difficult to take a look at it in here. The depths of these lots are one hundred and twenty-eight, I believe, I can't quite see from here. Uh, so what we did, if you take a look at, the depth of these lots did not change. The depth is exactly the same. What this does, the lot width goes from, I'm sorry, on this side is seventy, it goes to sixty on this side. So it allows for a home that's actually fifty feet wide instead of a home that's sixty feet wide. But these lots originally were designed for much larger single-story, thirty-five, thirty-six hundred square feet. And these lots are designed for, uh, our largest single-story is at twenty-nine hundred square feet. But the, the, the point you're making is, is actually head-on. Uh, people want more outdoor living space, so we're actually, we're not taking any backyard space out. They both have the same backyard. This version, uh, because this block has two more units, affords us to sell these homes at a price that's more compared, uh, in demand with our homeowners to the north want. So what happens, this product, this version here, you know, becomes a, a different product and substantially more expensive than this. Uh, and I don't have the exact number, I mean, we haven't, you know, priced these out, but if it was available today, there's a substantial difference. And, and so the backyard living space is the same. The square footage of the home itself goes from thirty-six hundred square feet to about twenty-nine hundred square feet. from thirty-six hundred square feet to about twenty-nine hundred square feet. Of course, you know, your lot obviously is narrower, but the back, the depth in the back area, again, if you can tell the depth on these lots is exactly the same as the depth in these lots. And so that's basically, you know, how we got to the additional three lots on option, the fifty lot versus the forty-seven lot. But no, you're exactly right, people want outdoor living space. I do have to say that water consumption and maintenance of yards is becoming an issue for our customers. A typical home, I mean, we serve our customers on a regular basis, is about a hundred and, you know, twenty to forty dollars a month to sub out to somebody to come in and maintain their landscaping. Then you add their water bill on top of that, so at some point, it becomes an issue, not so much today, interest rates are substantially lower than they were back in February or March, but, you know, energy bill, energy bills are an important factor for our customers, overall cost of homeownership, which is maintenance and water, back, I mean, front door landscaping, back door landscaping maintenance, and then water consumption. So but really, the biggest difference between those two is the size of the home that's going to fit on this version versus this version. And gets it into a price range, gives us that diversity of price range that is still in a range that becomes affordable to our customers based on what their needs are. I hope that answers.
It does, I mean, I appreciate the thoughtful response. I can tell you considered that, I just wanted to express that because I think there is a shift for a lot of folks right now, and we've seen many projects come through here over the last couple of years, mostly pretty high densities. And I think there's, there's folks that want some space right now, too.
You're absolutely right, and the balance for us as developers is, how do we create lower-density projects that are still affordable with land cost, impact fee cost, school fee cost, although I got to admit, Clovis Unit, I just lowered their school fees by about fifteen cents a square foot. But costs by and large are going up, so and land costs are going up. And part of the challenge, I can say, if I, and I'm kind of getting sidetracked, but if I may add one more point, if there was another two hundred acres of land available to develop here, I can tell you, this is exactly where people would want to live. And as more land becomes available, price of land goes down, right? So then we can afford to put much bigger homes or homes on bigger lots. But unfortunately, it's very, very, what land is available is extremely limited and the sphere of influence ends basically just to the east of Harlan Ranch, right? So the next, I think the northeast village is probably twenty years out to get developed, but this is exactly where people want to live, close to one sixty-eight, close to CRMC, children's hospitals opening, that whole medical center just across from CRMC, and a whole host of other job creating facilities, including the medical school, CHS's medical school. So the demand to live here is really high because folks see a basically a five-minute commute to their work. We, our number one customer in this neighborhood is a nurse, male and female, and they basically work down the street. So unfortunately, if there was more land available, we could do a lot more things and things would become a lot more affordable in this part of Clovis.
Thank you again, Mr. Semi.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yes, I have a question for you, Mr. Semi. So just, I just want to clarify, so we have two, two decisions to make, or one decision but based on either a forty-seven lot or a fifty lot. It is your preference that we approve of the fifty lot, then is what you're saying? Even though two are presented to us, you as the applicant would prefer the fifty lot?
Yes, correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And I know you mentioned that you did not have the price points, you don't know what you're going to be pricing, but can you give a range as to the difference between, are you able to provide some type of range between the forty-seven lot and the fifty lot as stated for possibly making it more affordable for your people who buy your homes?
It could be, so again, not all the lots, but again, the lots in that block, right? It could be, I can tell you this, the lots here, and they're forced back into Locan, it's probably going to be the least popular lot we're going to have, and this version are still substantially bigger lots. If you just looked at these lots here, does that show up on your screen when I do this or no? Oh, okay, got it. So the difference between these lots, I'm going to guess, and these lots here, the home price difference could be, I'm going to guess, fifty to seventy thousand dollars. So it's a substantial savings for a customer, smaller lots and smaller homes. So again, it creates, you know, a diverse, a diverse range. The homes in the north will be obviously less because they're smaller homes and smaller lots yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Antoin already asked.
Oh.
You're presenting a fifty lot request today.
Yes, Commissioner.
And nothing, you shouldn't construe anything I've said to question the quality of your product or your company.
No, thank you.
I think it's just unusual to.
You're exactly right, Commissioner.
And yes, I have another little thing about last-minute issues, too, because we can't give it the thoroughness of reading that we could if it came in today or two days before.
I have a question. There is no HOA now, correct?
That's correct. The gates are removed, public, all public streets, correct, including the access to Mrs. Hunt's.
Okay. And just for information, we are seeing more family members moving back home today than we saw during the Great Depression, okay? But how long is this going to last? I'm going to assume if he started building his homes, as soon as he'd probably be able to start would be June of next year. But by the time they're finished and ready to market, I would hopefully, this environment we're in today will change, and we're not going to have the what's hitting us today hitting then, it's going to change the whole living style in the market, the market. We see the market really picking up after January first. And my understanding now is you guys are being overrun by people from the Bay Area that know that they can come to the Great Clovis area, Great Clovis schools, and work out of their homes and only go to the office in the Bay Area one or two days a month. So I see the real advantages of what you're doing and stuff. The price market that you're aiming at is what I see in the market out there that a lot of the first-time buyers and stuff are looking for. So these numbers aren't out of line. The greatest concern I had over all of this from our documentation is the five-foot setback on the garage side. You answered that for me, so thank you. But anyway, that's what I had to say.
If I may reply back, you're exactly right. So we track a lot of data, number one city that we get requests on, hits on is Fresno-Clovis for our product, number two city is San Francisco. You're exactly right. And most of it is in the last, this shift happened about four months ago. You're exactly right, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open it up for anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item.
We have Carol Hunt on the line. Carol, you have been unmuted, you can now speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know, are they going to go through the court? I don't want to be repetitious, that have been submitted to the council.
This is hers, right? We have them.
Yes, correct. They have been submitted for the record to the commission. So I'm not really, in the past, the procedure has been that you ask questions and get them answered, but this was all done ahead of time, so I'm not sure if this is a time when I'm supposed to be going through the questions or just saying, I am, I'm indirectly for, I prefer no development, but I understand that's not going to happen. But I just had those questions that I wanted to address. My main concern would be water flow, surface area water flow, and the other water flow issues that have been both on the northern tract and on the southern recently purchased tract. And from what I'm getting on the responses that I received this afternoon is that all those issues will be handled by the, the system itself within the subdivision. There will be no surface flow any longer across those properties, is that correct? The applicant's engineer will walk up to the microphone and answer your question.
Chair and members of the commission, my name's Gary Ginetta, eleven nineteen S Street in Fresno. And, yeah, the way it's designed, designed to meet the flood control standards, so all the runoff that hits this property will go into the flood control system. So any water that was leaving this property and going to Mrs. Hunt's property will no longer go there with the typical rain. There's also the issue out there of the alluvial drain, and this will not affect the alluvial drain. In other words, there won't be any change in the issue she has on her property today with the drain or water coming from a major event entering her property. There won't be any more water, but there won't be a change in any increase of water.
Thank you for that.
I continue with on what Mr. Ginetta has just. In terms of a normal year, everything will be handled by the development, what about a year that's not normal, like the two subs, we had two years in a row that were considered, not this last year, but the two years prior to that? What will happen to the water flow in that situation if that were to happen?
There won't be a change with the major event. If there's another major event, like you had before, water did flow into your property, it's going to do the same thing again. But we're not going to increase, in fact, we're going to decrease the amount of water that would go into your property because, as you know, these properties undeveloped drain water into your property. That's not going to happen anymore with the typical storm and even with the major event because whatever was leaving this property is going to go into the system.
Okay.
The property, and everybody's, I think, is aware of the alluvial drain, where water comes from even east of this property, that water is still going to come through here. We're not changing it, we're not increasing it, and we're actually reducing it by developing the property and taking the runoff into the storm rain system.
Okay. So the earth and channel that was going to be along the southern part there, all water that would have been there will go into your internal system, is that correct?
You're saying that the previous project that was approved had a channel along the south boundary.
Correct.
That went towards your property. That was only for a major event, that wasn't for typical rainfall. And I think Sean's well aware of that, and so is the flood control district. What we did is, we didn't want to leave that channel there because it was just basically an earth channel. So what we've done is, we've taken the quantity of water on a major event that would have ran down the channel, will run down the roadway now.
Okay.
So there won't be any change.
Okay. And from the roadway, then it will go into the gutters of the system, not come my way?
Again, the typical runoff from a typical storm will go into the flood control system. Water that came onto your property from a major event was going to go through a channel. What we've done is we changed that channel to the roadway.
Yeah.
So a major vet water will still do what it's always done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Okay, seen none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, seen none, I'll bring it back to the applicant for any rebuttal.
I think we're good.
Okay, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for comments, concerns, motions.
I have a question for staff. So Mr. Semi mentioned that there is an error in our documents, that the garages should actually be twenty by twenty rather than twenty by twenty-two. So when we make a motion, do we need to ensure that we do both things, cite that it's a twenty by twenty for the garages and that for, sorry, my computer is freezing, sorry. Just one second here. Yes, and the setbacks for lots one through thirty-one should be five and four?
Correct, please.
We need to make those motions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just needed some clarification.
And staff, I have a question. If the council, or if the committee chooses to vote on the forty-seven lot, and they still want to proceed with fifty, will that, will they then have to come back to us with a request for a fifty lot and then it go to city council, or how would that go, just for the sake of argument?
Effectively, the council would be considering what is in front of the commission, the original proposal plus the modified proposal that the applicant has expressed intent on moving forward on, but having recommendation from the council regarding the forty-seven lot project, if that's the, if that's the item that the commission takes action on.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a question for staff. So as I understood it, the reason, and I want not to play back everything we discussed with Commissioner Cunningham earlier, but had this come in earlier, we would likely be having a discussion around a fifty lot development because you affirmed for us this evening that it's met all the requirements, the circulation's good, the density in accordance with the plant, general plan is sound. This was just a timing thing, and we've heard from the developer, Mr. Semi, that his preference is for fifty, is that?
That is correct, you're correct, Commissioner. And just to make point two, the original two maps that have been approved on this technical project is approved for fifty lots, so the applicant is going fifty for fifty now.
Okay. And I know I remarked earlier, I was debating whether I wanted to have the discussion with Mr. Semi or just here now, but I'm glad I spoke up earlier, I think that you had a thoughtful analysis and plan for how you're going to provide that diversity in housing in the backyard space. Again, I would just holistically like to see more developers provide some more space at times. I get it, we've got to create affordable housing, whether that's the quote-unquote affordable housing as Sacramento sees it, but also what our local economy can support. So with that, I kind of, understanding what you just affirmed, that if we were evaluating a fifty, I would be willing to support a fifty lot development this evening.
Yeah, affordability is something that's going to be a real thing for the next two years. What's happening today is going to take two years for it really to be solved and get things back on track. And housing prices are going up anyway, but still, we need to do something, and this is giving some more affordable housing to the Clovis area. It's a quality development on it, so the fifty parcels, it's something that we need and something that fits into what our real estate economy is today and that I see for at least the next three years. Because when this gets done, it's going to be right there when things really start changing. And we need, we'll need this product, I think, for Clovis. So I think we should approve his fifty-one lots.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make motion. We approve a resolution for tract map 6339 for a 50 lot and hot lot superseding two previous approved tentative tract maps.
I would like to make the, if I can, make the additional changes to
Oh yes, the.
Have it show a five and four?
Yes.
For our setback?
You're correct, Chair.
And the garage dimensions?
Garage dimensions, yes.
And that they have the concrete or the paved on the totter side? Because I didn't see that in here.
I believe it's under condition 28.
Is it in their condition? Okay, I didn't see it, sorry. Are you, are you okay with those changes?
I'm okay if you second it.
Okay, I'll second it then.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve a 50 lot tentative map 6339 with modified conditions, providing for a five foot setback on the garage side, four foot on the opposite side for interior lots and lots one through 31, and for a garage size dimension of 20 foot by 20 foot with inside dimensions. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve PDP 2020 dash zero zero one.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve PDP 2020 dash zero zero one. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item, consider approval R 2020 dash zero zero three. A request to approve a rezone of approximately 30 acres of property located near the northeast corner of Clovis and Dakota Avenue to be consistent with the underlying general plan designation of MU dash V, mixed use village. This request is to rezone the subject property from the C2 Community Commercial, M1 Light Industrial, M2 Heavy Industrial, and R2 Multi-Family Medium High Density Residential Zone District to the CM Commercial and Light Manufacturing Zone District. Clovis Dakota LLC property owner, Don Pickett and Associates Incorporated, applicant Nick Crawford, representative. Staff?
Good evening, Chair Hatcher, members of the commission. Give me just one second. I have the next two items, so I want to make myself comfortable here. Okay, we're good to go. So the project location is at the northeast area of Clovis and Dakota Avenue. It's an approximately 30 acre site. Some of you may remember it was a former site of a winery that was demoed back in 2016, I believe it was. And right now it's currently vacant and undeveloped, if you've had a chance to go by. The project, for context of the area, is located just east and a little bit to the north of the existing Clovis Recreation Center. And it's also bounded by the Ponting Basin, which is the flood control basin there to the east. So just a little background on this particular site. Back in the early 1900s, this is when the original winery was there. Sometime in the 1960s or 70s, the, the site was abandoned and basically sat abandoned up until about 2015 or 16, when the buildings were condemned and demolished by the city for safety reasons and structural integrity. Backing up, in 2014, a portion of the site was approved for 144 multifamily units, which subsequently did not move forward. In 2018, the applicant who's here this evening initiated purchase of portions of the site. And sometime in 2019 or 2020, they, they acquired the site, which is now in their possession. So the request tonight is for a rezone. And as you can see on this map up here, there's multiple zone districts kind of spread out through the entire project site. There's C2, M1, M2, and R2. And what the applicant is requesting is to essentially clean up the zoning there and zone it all to the CM district, which is Commercial and Light Manufacturing. At the bottom there, based on our code, the CM district is intended for retail and wholesale sales uses, light manufacturing, warehousing, distributing, and storage operations. So although this is just a rezone tonight, the conceptual, the conceptual site plan that the applicant has provided is shown up here. At full belt buildout, it would be approximately 390,000 square feet of total space, comprised of about 49 different buildings that would be on individual parcels that would, you know, be sold or leased out separately. The average building size would be between 5 and 10,000. Although there are some larger ones, as you can see up here on the site plan. The project itself would include sidewalks throughout the site as well as landscaping. Of note, along Dakota, there would be a 20 foot minimum landscape setback, which is, it actually exceeds the minimum for the CM district. But there's also prevailing setback in which if there's greater setbacks surrounding there, that's the setback it needs to match. So along Dakota, it would be 20 feet. The areas that you see in green would provide for a minimum 15 foot setback. And then the interior streets, if you will, would have a minimum of a 10 foot setback. So these are just some conceptual elevations. The, the project would include, most of the structures would be anywhere between 20 and 25 feet in height. The CM district actually allows for building heights of 75 feet, so this is considerably lower than that. So I just wanted to show you some context of what, what type of product is that the applicant hopes to construct there. And here's a different type of elevation that, that could be on that site. So although not required per city policy to hold neighborhood meetings for a rezone action, the applicant did voluntarily hold two different meetings. One back in fall of 2019 was an in-person one. And then due to COVID, in August, they actually sent out letters. And while they didn't want to meet in person because of COVID and distancing, they did at least provide the opportunity for residents within a 600 foot radius to, to provide comment, and they made themselves available to address any concerns or, or questions during that time. So staff received three public comment letters, primarily the concerns had to do with traffic circulation, the potential for medical office uses within the CM district, as well as noise. So to address the traffic circulation, again, this is the conceptual site plan. There'd be two primary, primary access points, one directly off of Clovis and then one off of the Sabre Avenue, which would be constructed, which is directly off of Dakota. The overall circulation pattern is up there in the red hash lines you can see. So it's, it's most likely that traffic associated with this project is going to come off of either Clovis or Sabre via Dakota, which means that it's unlikely they're probably going to sneak through the residential development just by nature of where the uses are going to be. And then lastly, there would be private driveways. As you see indicated there with the red stars, those are actually just private driveways. So even though there would be access off of there, it would only be serving whatever those seven businesses are. So to address the concern regarding the potential for medical office use, we received a letter where a neighbor was generally supportive of the project overall, but had concerns with, with allowing medical type uses in that general area. Because of the type of development it is, the, the end users are not known at the time. They're usually, you know, sold as they go. So, you know, we don't know exactly what users are going to be there ultimately. The CM zone district does allow, though, for, for various medical service uses. And most of those actually require conditional use permit. So what that means is that if a medical office or most medical type uses that come through will have to come before planning commission for consideration. And, you know, depending on the climate or whatever is going on at the time, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to condition any such uses in the future. And on that point, the city historically has not restricted independent uses. So, you know, I think the, the request was from the neighbor to, to restrict that use as part of this rezone. But that historically has not been the practice that we've, we've had, so. In terms of noise, a masonry wall would be constructed along the northern and eastern property lines where the property is directly adjacent to residential. In addition, there's a minimum of 15 foot landscape setback. If you recall in the conceptual site plan, the structures would actually be a little bit further, further away. But they would at least have that minimum of 15 feet. Also, there are several noise regulations that the users would have to comply with, just typical of any use. You know, we have decibel standards that, that, that businesses have to adhere to. It would be no different in this case. And then future noise intensive uses could be required to provide additional acoustical studies if needed. We do have general plan policies that would allow for that. And if there are uses with the CUP, we can certainly require it at that time if, if we feel that it's necessary to be able to, to come up with some mitigation measures for whatever use is before us. So in conclusion, this rezone request allows for the zoning of the site to be brought into consistency with the general plan designation. It would allow for use that is intended within that particular area. It's called out in our general plan. The conceptual site plan and elevations do indicate that the design and layout would meet or in a lot of cases exceed our minimum development standards. And then lastly, it does meet many of our general plan goals and policies that support economic development. So with that, staff recommends that planning commission consider approval of rezone of the approximately 30 acres to the CM zone district. So staff is available for any questions, and I know the applicant, Mike Pickett is here. If you'd like to come up and say a few words or if you have any questions for him.
Any questions for staff? No? Okay, seeing none of the applicants.
Good evening, Mike Pickett with Don Pickett and Associates. I'm the owner. So my family has developed many of these projects in the community, mostly in Fresno. And we're excited to bring this concept to Clovis. It serves a lot of small business owners in the community, creates a lot of jobs, adds to the tax base. We sell these buildings to local owners that it, it adds to the local wealth in the community. And that's, that's really it. It's, we're excited to get this project going. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. I'll open it up now for anyone here to speak in support of this item.
There are none.
Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none?
None.
Okay. Do you have any rebuttal for that? I think that is a no. Okay, I'll bring it back, close the public portion and bring it back to the commission.
I have a question for staff. This would fall under what we were notified yesterday by our governor, the changes in the way we will be living and operating in the future. Are, as planning, looking at now, because this type of development, would the developer be required to put charging stations in, electric charging stations? Are you looking at that as a requirement?
Yes, so as part of the site plan review, that, that portion of it would be reviewed at that time. They would comply with the Cal Green Building Code standards, which do require a certain percentage of overall parking spaces be EV capable. So, but, but that would typically be reviewed during the site plan review process.
So it is now a requirement that must be?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because we're going to see that as an issue on everything we have come before us on it. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad the governor finally took your advice and let.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody to make a motion? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the resolution 2020 dash zero zero three.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Antuna, to approve rezone 2020 dash zero zero three. Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Moving on to the next item, consider items associated with approximately 1.07 acres or portion of property located on the northwest corner of Shaw and Cole Avenues. Deborah and Robert Carlson owners, Patrick Murphy of Clovis LLC, applicant representative. Item one, consider approval GPA 2020 dash zero zero two. A request to amend the text of the Shaw Avenue specific plan to permit drive-through uses for this specific site. Item B, consider CUP 2020 dash zero zero three. A request to amend the adopted use schedule for the PCC Planned Commercial Center to allow for a drive-through use and to allow for an approximately 3,300 square foot drive-through restaurant use. Staff?
Good evening again, Chair Hatcher and members of the commission. So this project location is on the northwest corner of Shaw and Cole Avenues and the Sierra Pavilion Shopping Center. It's an approximately one acre lease area. And the project is proposed to go where the existing Pier One, which would be demolished if this project is able to move forward. For context, the site is just east of the Cool Hand Luke's Restaurant, as well as south of the Lowe's Home Improvement and At Home Store they're probably familiar with. So for a little background, the GPA, the 2020 zero zero two is a request to amend the Shaw Avenue specific plan to allow a drive-through use. For a little background, the Shaw Avenue specific plan was originally adopted back in 1978 with the major amendment in 1994, which is when the prohibition on drive-throughs was, was modified or amended into the plan. So as it sits today, the plan currently prohibits drive-through establishments. The overall intent of the plan was to prevent lineal and strip commercial between Clovis and Temperance Avenues and to designate most areas for office and residential, as well as to focus retail and commercial in specific centers. So if you're driving down that corridor, there's, you know, larger shopping centers like the Sierra Pavilion, Sierra Vista. And that was the intent of the, the development of that plan. Just to show a little context of, of the drive-throughs that currently exist there. Throughout the years, there was a Foster's Freeze there back in 1985, Taco Bell in 94. There's a bank from 1980, Walgreens. And then Ride and Shine from a couple of years ago, which is currently under construction, which you may have seen. And most recently, earlier this year, there was a coffee kiosk, the Human Bean, as well as a future drive-through use on that vacant parcel that was approved. And then for context, that you can see where the proposed location is in this case. So conditional use permit 2020 zero zero three is requesting two things. It's, it's one requesting to amend the Planned Commercial Center Zone District use schedule to allow for the drive-through, but it's also intended to allow for the actual drive-through use itself. So on this conceptual site plan, there's, there would be an approximately 3,300 square foot drive-through building. Outdoor dining areas is noted on here, as well as landscaped areas that you see in the green. I do want to note, there was a typo in the staff report that referred to one of these areas as a dog area. That was in one of the original concepts, but it was since removed. So it would just actually be a landscaped area. So I just want to make that clarification. And then as you can see on these red arrows, this would be the circulation pattern that they're proposing, which would be a dual drive-through lane. And this is really just to accommodate the anticipated business that they have to prevent vehicles from queuing elsewhere, which the applicant can speak to a little bit more about their operation during their presentation. So these are the proposed elevations that they're proposing. As you can see, they try to keep as much as they can the intent of the Sierra Pavilion's design that's there. It's a little tricky when you have older shopping centers and then you have new buildings. So they do have some of those features that, that would tie in nicely with the updated facade of the At Home that was there recently. So this is just to give you an indication of what the new building would look like. So with that, staff recommends that planning commission consider approval of GPA 2020 zero zero two. A request to amend the text of the Shaw Avenue specific plan to permit a drive-through use, as well as conditional use permit 2020 zero zero three. A request to amend the adopted use schedule for the the PCC Zone District and to allow for a drive-through use. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. I know the applicant, representative from Raising Canes is actually here this evening, as well as the representative from the Sierra Pavilion Shopping Center. I know that the Raising Canes applicant did have a presentation. So whenever you're ready for that, they can. for that, they can do that.
Questions for staff?
I have one question. I was trying to look back through the packet, but couldn't find it. So, hopefully, I wasn't dreaming of this, but did I see in the material that the city is looking at basically lifting or resetting the Shaw corridor to allow drive-through use potentially anywhere, so that we wouldn't just have these one-offs coming forward?
Yes, so that's a good question. So, there's actually a broader policy that's being worked on right now that is anticipated to go before Planning Commission next month, that would actually modify or make a recommendation to adjust or remove that policy altogether, so that we're not doing these kind of one-off policy amendments. But the way the market is now, and obviously, the Ride and Shine, the Human Bean, and, you know, now this proposal, you can kind of see where the market's headed, and we'll be prepared to make that recommendation next month.
Okay. Glad I wasn't making things up. But I guess, to that end, I would just comment, I mean, I always have trouble when we're setting precedents, when we're trying to do new things, right? Because that creates challenges later down the line. So, I guess, to that end, you know, in this case, maybe it'd be good if that was sequenced before this. I do, kind of just to cut to the chase, think some of this makes sense, especially in the current climate and the way that the build-out has happened. But I guess, just for the city's encouragement, maybe from a sequencing standpoint, if we're going to see a direction like this, I'd personally like to see some of these policy decisions come up before we keep entertaining all these one-offs.
Yeah, understood. I think the intent after the coffee kiosk was to do that, and then this came in pretty close after it. So, because of the timing of the applicant, we wanted to, you know, that's why this one ended up going first, before the broader policy discussion.
Yeah, that's fair. I guess, you've got to have interest first to know that you need to make a change. So, thank you for entertaining my comment.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll open it up to the applicant. Can you push that little third button? There you go.
I got it now, I do. Good evening, Chair Hatcher and members of the commission. My name is Patrick Murphy. I'm here representing the ownership. The address is 1234 East Seventeenth Street, Santa Ana, California. I'm just here as representative of ownership of the project. I'll be turning it over to Adam Caracci in a moment, who is here on behalf of Raising Canes, to answer your, one of the questions. Pier One, it wasn't a direct question, but one of the reasons why we're moving forward with this quickly is to replace the Pier One. That handwriting's been on the wall for a while. In one of my letters, the justification letter, the, we went to market pretty extensively on this thing, and found that the best, the highest and best use was through a casual dining, drive-through experience. So, worked it real hard. I've been involved with this project now for, I think it's better part of three years. I started with the Big Lots relocation, and have been working on the redevelopment and retenanting of this since that time. And I just want to commend, number one, the staff at the city. They are, I've been in this business now 35 years, and have worked up and down the state of California, and staff, planning, engineering, building department, economic development, are the best that we have encountered throughout the state. So, I commend the City of Clovis in that regard. That's very good. And if you have any questions for me, I'm available. I'll turn it over to Adam right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Hatcher, and the rest of the commission. My name's Adam Caracci. Address is 6800 Bishop Road, Plano, Texas. Thank you for having me this evening. It was important for me to be here and explain our brand and who we are, since we're new to this part of California. Raising Canes is a chicken finger, fast casual restaurant. We've been around since 1996. We were founded in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Since then, we have expanded to the Los Angeles area, but we're moving up the coast, and this would be one of the first restaurants in what we consider Northern California for us. So, if you would go to the next, I don't think I, our name, by the way, is named after Kane, which was our founder, Todd Graves' dog, who is in the image in the bottom left-hand corner. So, as I mentioned before, we do one thing, and we do it well, and that's a chicken finger meal. The only variety is that you can get two, three, or four, or six chicken fingers. They all come with fries, they all come with toast, and they all come with coleslaw. We also serve Coca-Cola products, and iced tea, and lemonade. And that's it. And that's very important to us, because it allows us to be efficient and refined, which means that our operation can be the best in the industry, and we get people through much quicker than you might see some of the other competitors out there able to do. As far as who we are from an involvement standpoint, we actually have several core areas that we're involved in the community. This restaurant, along with probably the other two restaurants that we'll build in this area eventually, will have one manager, a community marketing manager that is, that is dedicated to serving your community. So, they'll actually be working with various leaders in your community to give back. But our core tenants are education, animal welfare, entrepreneurship, as well as the others that you see here on the slide. So, that person's job will be to make sure that we're giving back and we're not just taking. So, that may be volunteering to cater events, or donating money to philanthropic endeavors that fall into one of these areas. And then, other, you know, asks can be explored as well. So, we really feel that it's vital for us to give back and not just be another chain that comes in and takes. This is just an idea of what the inside of one of our restaurants looks like. It's meant to have a warehouse industrial feel, but we use all high-quality materials, so that's real wood paneling that you see there. We use real brick on the wall where the Canes mural is. The exterior of our buildings are all real three-part stucco, real brick, rather than some of the other materials you might see on the market like ethos or veneer brick. This, again, is the existing Pier One building, which I believe closed yesterday, and it's going to allow, you know, assuming this is approved, us to backfill that site pretty quickly and keep it from being vacant too long. And then, as Ricky mentioned, we have matched the existing At Home building using the colors that they brought in earlier this year when it opened, and we also matched the existing Spanish tile roofs that are on the At Home building in the Cool Hand Luke's, and the balance of the shopping center, just on the other side of Clovis Avenue. And from a landscaping perspective, it's really important to us that we provide you with the top quality. Our landscaping is not, we don't try and just come in and provide with, you know, what the minimum is. We really pride ourselves on our building looking good, and part of that is landscaping. So, we'll be maintaining the lush lawn that's out front, the palm trees behind the Sierra Pavilion side sign, and then introducing landscaping back in to the impervious areas. Additionally, this building is smaller than the existing building that's there, so we'll be able to give back, I think, a little bit more landscaping than's there today. So, just to recap, we're excited to be in your community. We do one thing, and that's just the chicken fingers. We provide a high-quality landscaping and site plan, and then also provide a, you know, back to your community. And so, we're really excited to be here. If you have any questions about how our drive-through operates, I would be more than happy to explain those. But just in general, it's a dual-lane concept that's new to the industry. You've probably seen it with some of the other folks like Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out. But basically, it uses tablet ordering, which allows for card payment and ordering via a crew member, which is what we call our employees, and they're stationed outside. So, during peak hours, the menu board and the pay window and the pickup window are obsolete. There are people out there currying food to the cars and making sure that, you know, they pull forward, that they're not backing up and stacking into the parking lot. We've also provided, I think, about 20 spaces in our queuing, which exceeds the city's code, so that we can ensure that the site operates as efficiently as possible. During non-peak hours, we then revert to the menu board and the pay window and the pickup window, but that would be mid-afternoon or late night. But during lunch and dinner, we'll have people out there taking orders and pushing people through as fast as we can. Our speed of service time is about a minute forty-six seconds right now, from the time you place your order to the time you're getting your food and leaving the lot. And that has to do with basically serving one thing. We know you're ordering chicken, so when you pull in the lot, we drop chicken in the fryer, and it's getting served by the time you get up to the window. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them about our operation or who we are. I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. What do you envision as your hours of operation?
So, Sunday through Thursday, our hours are nine to 1:30, and then Friday and Saturday, it's nine to 3:30 a.m.
Okay. Nine a.m. to 1:30 a.m., and then 3:00 a.m. to 3:30 a.m. So, you envision your product also for a breakfast?
No, it's an early lunch.
Okay.
So, we don't have a, yeah, it's, we don't have a breakfast component to our menu.
Okay.
And we don't really have a lot of demand for it until 11 o'clock, but it's open that way if somebody comes in, and they do, you know, especially with shift work, sometimes people appetites, their appetites change.
Makes sense. And you're seeing, looking at your space diagram, you have, you did have a pet area, but that's been eliminated now and changed to landscaping. Is there, what's the rationale or reason behind that?
It was an idea that was being entertained by our executive team as providing, but then that basically necessitates somebody policing it, and so it was eliminated to focus more so on our dining component, rather than making sure that people are picking up after their pets, or leaving their pets within a designated area, and not getting too close to the front entrance of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just one question. I guess, at your busier or busiest establishment?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of throughput, based on whatever intervals you measure, 15 minutes, 10 minutes, half hour, hour, what kind of, what kind of flow can you expect during the peak?
I don't have the number of, like, vehicles per hour off the top of my head, but the rate of service is 1 minute forty-five seconds, from the time you order to the time you're leaving the lot. So, and that has been expected to go down, especially with adding the dual drive-throughs. So, the only dual drive-throughs that we're operating right now are in the Los Angeles area, and they were kind of makeshift as a result of COVID. And so, because we couldn't have dine-in, we were able to reduce the number of parking spaces and add a second or third drive-through lane, and then add the tablet ordering. So, we've seen that number go from what used to be two and a half minutes to a minute and forty-five seconds at those restaurants in L.A. But with the actual engineered double drive-through, we expect that to go down by a few seconds. But to answer your question about, like, a number of trips generated per hour, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On that, we'll open it up for anyone here to speak in support of this item. Maria, do we have anyone?
There are none.
Okay. Seen none? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seen none? I will close the public portion and bring it back. Okay. Well, I honestly have never heard of you guys. My 18-year-old had, and she said, "We just had to vote for it. You guys have the best chicken." No idea where she went and saw one, or ate one, but I think the plan looks really good. I'm excited to have something, I mean, chicken's always great, but I mean, a bigger menu is good, too, but I mean, I'm excited to have something new that could really draw the area. I personally don't see a problem with approving another drive-through there. I think, given the market and how things are, I think it will be very well received, and so I have no problem with this item.
I would also echo Chair Hatcher's comments. I'm excited, I'm always excited to see new things come to Clovis. We obviously need to be thoughtful about how we incorporate them, but in this instance, I think the drive-through location is great. The city got my comments earlier on just kind of encouraging staying in front of these precedents, but, yeah, I like the project.
Yeah, I'm all for the project and drive-throughs. You guys have talked about changing things. That is a new way of life today that we've been introduced to, so I'm glad to see you guys are going to address that for the future, but this is something I think is going to be good for the area.
Yeah, I join with the other commissioners in welcoming Raising Kane to the Clovis community, should we pass tonight, and I think it will. I think it'll be a great addition to the community, and so far, it appears like as though you're gone the extra mile to integrate well with us and partner with us. So, I would be in support of it as well.
Well, I'm just going to echo everything else, so I don't know what else to say other than, yes, I concur with all my fellow commissioners, and I'm excited to not see an empty building sitting right on Shaw Avenue, and that something really beautiful will be built there in its place as well. So, yeah, welcome to our community, well, should it pass.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item A, GPA 2020-002.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, to approve GPA 2020-002. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve CUP 2020-003.
Second.
Sorry, I missed the second on that one.
Commissioner Bedstead, talking through his mask. Not able to speak loud enough.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes, second.
I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Bedstead, to approve CUP 2020-003. Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the last item. Consider approval OA 2020-003. A request to amend the Clovis Municipal Code to clarify and refine Section 9.18.050 RHN Overlay District, and to establish a ministerial process to subdivide parcels that qualify for development pursuant to the RHN Overlay District, City of Clovis, applicant. Staff?
You know, it's possible that some of you thought the chicken fingers application was going to be the highlight of your evening, but for those of you who thought that, you didn't clearly take into consideration the RHN Overlay Ordinance Amendment. This is an application to, from the city to amend its municipal code, and specifically to refine the existing regional housing needs overlay. The purpose is to clarify the intent of the original ordinance without really making any substantive changes to the ordinance provisions. The proposal also includes the addition of a ministerial parcel map process for regional housing needs overlay properties. I'll talk a little bit about that as I get through the presentation. So, I want to provide some background, and it will be brief, but I want to go all the way back to housing elements to provide a kind of foundation for why we're here. Housing elements, as you probably recall, are required for every city and county as a mandatory element of every jurisdiction's general plan. Housing elements must be updated every eight years, and each update, together with its reporting period, is referred to as a cycle. So, the City of Clovis adopted its fifth cycle housing element back in 2016, and we're just now starting to work on the sixth cycle element, which will be due and adopted to HCD in January of 2024. which will be due and adopted to HCD in January of two thousand and twenty-four. So each cycle must show that it has sufficient land, or the city has sufficient land to accommodate its regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. I'm probably gonna start saying that throughout the presentation, so the RENA, as determined by the Fresno COG. So basically, what happens is COG gives us numbers of housing units in various income categories that we need to show we can accommodate within the housing period. When we were going through the fifth cycle housing element preparation, the analysis showed that some of the city's fourth cycle, so the previous cycle's RENA, was still outstanding in the high-density category. So we hadn't completed all of the inventory requirements that we needed to. And so we had what is called carryover responsibility. That required us to designate additional land inventory to accommodate a little more than forty-four hundred units at the higher density number, which is twenty-five units or greater per acre. We looked at a couple of different strategies to accommodate that additional density, and ultimately, two programs were adopted, one of which was the Overlay Zone of the RHN overlay. And that was adopted by the council in November of two thousand and eighteen. And again, that was a specific tool to help the city meet its RENA carryover burden. So the overlay, as it was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, is the same overlay that's in place today, and its characteristics haven't changed. The RENA overlay, or the RHN overlay, applies to residentially designated properties between one and ten acres in size. Eligible properties must also be shown on a map or diagram and a list that's adopted by the city council. The overlay allows development of multifamily housing at thirty-five to forty-three units per acre as a permitted use, so without any discretionary application before the city council does the planning commission. And development projects taking advantage of the RENA overlay or RHN overlay must adhere to the development standards which are outlined in the RHN overlay ordinance. So I started off by describing that there were gonna be some refinements that are proposed to the overlay. And again, the purpose is to clarify the intent of the regional housing needs overlay relative to four specific points. The overlay applies, as I noted, to all residentially zoned parcels within the city. All parcels that meet the qualifications are eligible to be developed according to the development standards in the overlay. The map of parcels and the associated list of parcels are intended to identify qualifying properties, and that list should be updated annually. The inventory of qualifying RHN overlay parcels is intended to be part of the city's RENA inventory in order to comply with the city's RENA obligation. So again, that's a clarification or a confirmation that there's a direct relationship between the RHN overlay and the city's RENA obligation. I noted that there's a ministerial parcel map process that's included in this ordinance amendment proposal. The ministerial process would apply to parcels that qualify for development pursuant to the RHN overlay. That process would also ensure that requirements referenced in the MAP Act, the California MAP Act, are continued to be met, so there's not a, an elimination of any state requirements. But it would remove the need for public hearings, as well as the opportunity for opposition appeals. This, again, is a tool to help address and comply with the city's RENA obligations. Stepping back and taking a look at the proposal, staff conducted an analysis, and the results of that are on the screen in front of you. The proposed ordinance makes refinements that are necessary to clarify the intent of the existing ordinance. There are no material changes to densities, development standards, or parcel eligibility. And in fact, there are no substantive changes, really, that are included in this proposal. The ordinance amendment is consistent with the city's general plan, and the project is exempt from CEQA under the common sense exemption, which you gotta love the name of, right? The state law that has a common sense exemption, which really specifies that CEQA applies only to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, which is certainly the case in the instance of this ordinance amendment. I just killed the, well, the next slide just simply said what our recommendation is, and our recommendation as staff is for the council, for the commission, to adopt a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment as presented to you this evening. I'd happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
We currently have lots designated throughout Clovis, now on a map. If I was a builder and I acquired some property, could I just take a piece of that property and tell them that I want to be in this program?
The answer is, unfortunately, maybe. So if there's an interest on the part of an owner to being included, and that's brought to the city's attention, and there's none of the provisions that would exclude the inclusion of that property, then it could be included, and it would have to be shown on the map that was adopted by the council, which will most likely occur, I think we've set, for the spring in conjunction with the annual progress report.
I haven't seen one of these maps in a long time. Are these parcels grouped together, or are they spread out through Clovis?
They're spread out.
Good, because I don't, would not like to see us develop another South Shaw area. So thank you. That's the only questions I had right at the moment.
Any other questions? Seeing none, since you're also the applicant. I'll open it up to anyone here to speak in support.
There are none.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? There are none. Okay, I assume you don't have any rebuttal?
None.
None, okay. I will now close the public portion and bring it back. Does anybody have any final comments, questions, or motions?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I didn't get my question off earlier, but since Commissioner Hinkle brought up the map, so I believe, and I actually provided it to someone else in the community a while back, Brian Iraqi oriented me to where it was on the city's website. But that map is out there. And if memory serves, I remember when we did the RENA overlay, there were designated parcels spread throughout, throughout the city. So just commenting on that, thank you.
And if I might, one clarification is, the map and list of parcels, its disposition is probably the one obvious thing that this refinement proposes, which is to clearly identify that the map is intended to identify qualifying properties, and as properties for some reason need to come off the list, or as properties propose or become qualifying and want to be added to the list, that list does need to be updated on at least a routine basis yearly, is what's currently proposed.
And to that end, as that's updated, is that something that would be brought here? Or would that just be publicly made available as?
The process does not require planning commission action, but it does require at least one public or community meeting conducted by staff, in addition to the council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve OA twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-three.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Antuna, to approve ordinance amendment twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-three. Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham had a question about the last item that we received, that that is just now a motion of record, or an item of record. The email, okay, so yes, that's already in the record.
That is part of the evening's record, yes.
Do we have any old business? Okay, seeing none, any new business? Okay, seeing none, I will join the meeting at seven fifty-six. Two hours. I got it. Two, under two hours.